Everyone, to the June 2019 Danvers School Committee meeting, I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, I'd like to read the Danvers Public Schools' mission statement. "The Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence." So, this evening, items of interest from the Superintendent School Committee of the Community.
Thank you. In last month, I think I forgot to do something, so I'm going to help out for this time. I think we just need to ask if anyone is videotaping, and then we're going to put our notes together for this year.
Sure. Is anyone in the audience recording tonight's meeting? Okay? No?
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Items of interest from the Superintendent. I would like to share that as a district, we now have an Instagram account that is recently put together. We have a new communication and business assistant in our office, and she, Whitney Hatfield, has started our Instagram, so there's been something up there daily, and we will continue that through the end of the school year and through the next school year also. And it links to our Facebook and then also our Twitter. So I'm sure tomorrow there'll be a new social media, but I think we just caught up to get on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. Thank you. We're looking forward to sharing all the good news of what's happening in the schools.
Definitely. It popped up on my Instagram today, too. Like it, so that I did. School Committee.
I have one, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I just wanted to congratulate the, most of all, the students in the class of 2019 on graduating last Saturday, but also the administration, the staff of the high school, the Department of Public Works, pretty much everybody who had anything to do with that. It was a terrific ceremony. I don't know who ordered the weather, but you should order more of it because it was really about the best we've had. And the kids were extraordinarily well behaved, better than the parents in some instances. But it was really great, so congratulations to everyone who had anything to do with that. Really a terrific ceremony.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly add a couple thank-yous first. Eric, thank you. I was not at last month's meeting. Thank you very much for your nice words about my brother's service. I appreciate that. I also am sure Mary Beth is going to talk about this, but I wanted to just publicly thank Misha, Mr. Bishi, hard to say, for the Key Success Program. That's such a generous donation that they do, so I thank them. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Columbino and Mr. Emberly and everyone that made Saturday's graduation such a successful event. Great job.
Are there anything?
I'm good.
Jeff?
I had a couple things. Last Tuesday, June 4th, I attended a digital literacy presentation here at Danvers High School. It was by the Pointnoy Institute Media Wise Project. This was brought here by, or it was sponsored by the Salem News as well as Karen Andrus, the publisher. This program aims to teach 1 million teenagers how to tell fact from fiction online by 2020. The presenters explained to the students how to fact-check information they read online with the different social media programs and apps. The program also aims to teach kids how to spot misinformation, disinformation, and how to figure out on their own what is reliable and what is accurate and what is unreliable and inaccurate. They also explained how putting fake news and disinformation out there can cause unnecessary worry and concern among students, parents, and the community. Danvers was one of four districts on the North Shore to have this program. It also went to the middle school later in the morning. It was at Salem, Gloucester, and Beverly. After attending this, there were things I did not know. There were things that I did not know that you could do or how you could do it. You can make fake news reports. There's like a website that you can do that. Makes it look like something you'd see on CNN. Students can do that. It also showed students how to check the information, to not just take it for what it's saying. So even though it's a site that you view, it doesn't mean it's a legitimate site. So, kids know more than the adults do nowadays, and it's a little bit scary, but this, this presentation was really good, and it is a project that is, they're taking it countrywide. So, they really wanted kids to get involved, to try to help them spot fake news and report it. So I thought that the high schoolers, they were engaged in the presentation with it, and some of the information they talked about, the students already knew. So, that was, I thank you, Dr. Dana, for allowing them to come, and Mary as well, because you were a part of that. And then on Thursday, June 6th, I was here, present when the Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito visited DHS. She was here to announce that DHS was the recipient of $150,000 grant, Skills Grant. This grant is going to help DHS to continue creating high-quality innovative pathways in Project Lead the Way courses here. Danvers High is the only school or district in the state that carries, or offers the five pathways. The Lieutenant Governor was very impressed by that. She took a tour of the school where she was able to speak with students that are participating in these Project Lead the Way courses. They're getting the hands-on education, and she was really engaged with them, as well as the students were engaged with her. And then at the end, she spoke with some students that explained how, before taking these courses, they never had an interest in maybe the science that they were taking. They always thought that they might have been an English major, and then they realized, wait, I could go into the medical field. And these careers, the hands-on, the trades, are really what the state is pushing for workers, because there's not enough workers for the different trades. So these Project Lead the Way courses that they're holding here at Danvers High, and hopefully working down into the middle school at some point, will help students find a focus that they're really interested in. And that, the Skills Grant actually helps by the materials that help to enhance the Project Lead the Way courses that we currently have. So really looking forward to the additional courses. I know this year, we started some new courses here. Students took it, loved it, and looking forward to taking additional ones. So, it made me want to go back to school. And then we had Clea Matt and Sky Pierre present the Why You Matter campaign as well to the Lieutenant Governor, which kind of coincides with her or the Governor's new campaign, which is respectfully...
Respectful and healthy relationships, yes.
Yep. So that was a very exciting day, and I want to thank the Lieutenant Governor for coming here and visiting with us, and everyone at DHS and the Superintendent's Office for supporting the visit, so. And that, and then one other thing, just wanted to thank all the businesses and parents and students that participated in Project Graduation. That was Saturday night, which is an all-night overnight party for the seniors to spend one last time together. It's a chemical and alcohol-free evening. We went to the Marblehead YMCA where they spent the evening doing activities and having hypnotists and DJ and karaoke, so it was a great evening. And I want to again thank everyone that helped with that and participated, and the students that attended it as well. So that's all that I have. Scholarship thank-you notes. That was under, is that under items of interest? Did we have?
Not at the moment, but we will over the summertime for you.
Sure.
Great.
I also wanted to mention the subcommittee liaisons for this, this coming year. Let me just find.
We do have it later in the agenda.
Yeah, well, so my agenda, oh, it's just kind of weird. Sorry about that. I'm on a little bit different agenda at the moment, sorry.
So Diane's looking at me. It may have been a draft of the next month's agenda?
Yeah, that's actually what it is.
Perfect, okay. So we're going to go back and...
So now it's time for items of interest to the audience.
Yes, anyone?
Items of interest from the audience.
Community, any interest. Sorry about that. All right. Information from the student representative.
That was a fast summer.
Sorry. Sorry, everyone. I don't know why, it just came up. Wasn't there earlier.
Yeah. So, I'm really sad that we don't have Clea here today. I will read to you all, and hopefully not in monotone and boring voice. So, we're going to start with Grade Oak. The Grade Oak Band and Chorus students performed to the students and families last week. It was an amazing concert and featured a combined band and chorus performance of Somewhere Over the Rainbow. It was a true testament to the collaboration and cooperation of the students and the staff. The fourth graders will host their annual Wax Museum on Tuesday morning, tomorrow, which is, I imagine, which is the culminating project of the cross-curricular unit in the Writing and Social Studies. Each student researched one of the states and chose a famous person from the state to research. Students will dress up as that historical figure and share with families and students all that they have learned about this unit. That sounds really fun. Wish I did that. And Highlands, they're looking forward to ending the year with their spring concert this Wednesday evening, and their fifth graders are celebrating on Friday morning for graduating. It was, it was a wonderful celebration of a collaborative effort between students and staff. The Highlands data team worked alongside all staff to continue to grow the understanding of the FAR cycle and how to continue to implement this process and infuse formative assessments to improve and make data-driven decisions to ensure success of all of our students. The fourth grade students finished up their Revolutionary War units during both reading and writing workshops. They finished their Google Slides presentation showing a depth of knowledge that came from their research, research and use of primary sources. Our specialists were wrapping up their SEL time with their students this week and look forward to continuing to support the students in class. And then at Riverside, it's been a very successful year for Riverside students. In addition to embracing the new science curriculum, Riverside took on social-emotional learning in full force. Kindergartners and first graders explored a new curriculum called We Are Thinkers, taught by the school's social workers on basic skills such as eye contact and appropriate ways to enter conversations during playtime. Older students dove into various topics during Open Circle and Alveus lessons, in addition to many other important discussions during SEL time. All in all, students have a better understanding of their own emotions, being problem solvers, empathetic citizens, and how to have a positive and lasting relationship with peers and adults. At Smith, part of the third grade readings units of study, the students were researching the geography, music, art, customs, food, and history of a country. Very well-rounded children at Riverside. They were, oh, sorry, it's Smith, I moved in town. But the final product will include a brochure or a commercial that encourages others to visit their country. The third graders are very engaged in this project and can't wait to share with their peers. And the kindergartners are also learning about community helpers. Today, Officer, actually, sorry, recently, Officer Baldstari came in to speak with them. He shared the role of police officers in the Danvers community, and he made all the kindergartners honorary junior officers, which I imagine was very eventful, and they took an oath and received a badge. It was a very exciting day for the Smith kids. And then at Thorpe, the kindergarten students had been using their reading superpowers that they have learned throughout the school year to dive deeper into nonfiction texts. Using these nonfiction texts, they were able to elaborate on their All About Nonfiction books. Each of their students became a kindergarten expert on the topic of their choice. And in math, the first graders have been using their place-value skills to learn to break apart two-digit numbers into tens and into ones, and they've learned strategies to record their work and are using these skills to add and subtract two-digit numbers. I remember that. That was very difficult, but I hope that this is going to help them. And they are excited to be working with larger numbers and ready to be second-grade mathematicians. And at Holton Richmond, last Wednesday was the annual celebration of learning. Students were able to bring parents, grandparents, and other guests to the school in order to demonstrate their work and reflect on their learning from the year. Students led their guests through science experiments, talked them about bucket drumming, and created stained glass together. The day even included an art gallery and an escape room. So, that sounds very fun. Our students did a wonderful job presenting to their guests, and they are very proud of the work that they did and enthusiasm for learning. Thank you to the guests who took their time to visit HRMS. And then at the high school, as we said earlier, Mother Nature cooperated very nicely on that Saturday, and it was a really nice setting for another graduation, and congratulations from Dr. Columbino to all the students. And thanks to the students who made speeches, and as well as Mr. Parsons for his words of wisdom, which was a really good speech. As we said earlier, Danvers was also visited by Lieutenant Governor Polito this month, as covered in the news by Clea, who's not here, I'm very sad. She heard from a group of students in the Project Lead the Way engineering classes who won a statewide industry challenge and visited our biomedical science classrooms and heard from a very well-spoken student panel. As we said, we got the grant for the capital skills to purchase equipment related to the innovation pathways, and we're one of the first and only schools in Massachusetts to have a designation in all five pathways, so very advanced. And we're very humble and excited at the opportunities the students will have with the funds we receive.
Excellent. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia.
I did have one thing to mention when I spoke. Clea Matt, who was at the visit with Lieutenant Governor, also wrote up an article for the Salem News, so it was in last week's, last Friday's paper. And then there was also an article on the Media Wise last Wednesday, so if you wanted to read more about it, you could check out those articles, so, but thank you. Excellent.
Thank you.
Information from the Superintendent.
Thank you. We have a couple items this morning. We're happy to have DEEP here for our teacher grants, and we'd like to welcome Angela Sumis and Mari Matt, our Vice President and Secretary. Good.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Superintendent Dana, Chairman Berry, the School Committee, and the District for inviting us to celebrate the long teachers who are receiving DEEP grants for the 2019-2020 academic year. The partnership's mission is to enrich and enhance the educational opportunities within the Danvers Public Schools. We accomplish this through providing financial resources for educational and supplemental materials to support student learning, enhance curriculum, and encourage innovation. This year, we're excited to award over $15,000 to 15 proposals. To begin, I just want to take a moment to thank our sponsors, the individuals, the families, and the businesses who support DEEP through membership and who attend our events over the year. Their generous and consistent support is what helps us raise the funds that we're giving away tonight, and we're very grateful for all of their participation. Also, thanks to the 2019 Grant Committee. This year was composed of Glenn Bucci, Angela Sumis, Dan Langley, Marian Kowalski, Diane Brinkley, Richard Stoney, and Arthur Skarman, who reviewed each of the proposals and took on the difficult task of choosing of the award recipients. So we thank them for their time and their commitment. Before I get to the awards, just quickly, I want to announce a couple of new opportunities that DEEP is excited to share this year as we continue to explore ways to meet our mission of student and teacher support. At the spring executive meeting, the board voted to begin a second fall grant teacher cycle. Knowing that wonderful planning takes place during the summer for the upcoming year, we'll be releasing a grant application mid-fall for teachers to apply for funding to implement initiatives during the current school year. Teachers will be able to plan the fall for funds that they'll receive for the spring to be able to use in their classrooms before the school year's over, in addition to the spring cycle for initiatives that will happen this fall that we're giving out tonight. Secondly, we're proud to announce a student grant cycle. With the growing number of opportunities for teachers to connect students with educational opportunities outside of the district, and students participating in programs like DEP at the high school where budding ideas are developed and take flight, DEEP is committed to working to ensure that students will be able to take full advantage of those opportunities and ideas through financial support. Be on the lookout in our August newsletter and on the DEEP website, our social media pages, for more information on both of those new opportunities. We're really excited to roll them out. Now the grants themselves. We invite a representative from each grant to please come up and accept, and for the interest of times, there are 15 of them, I'll ask that we hold applause until everyone's got theirs, and then we'll celebrate everyone together. And then, as an aside, if you're outside, you just want to take a group photo. So, thank you. Okay, first up, Violetta Powers for Riverside Elementary School to support the purchase of a sensory hallway kit to enhance an inclusive learning environment for all students, increase opportunities for students to move as part of self-regulation and concentration, and some more support social-emotional learning school-wide.
Thank you.
John Hodgson for Holton Richmond Middle School to continue their collaboration with Boston University in the Long-Term Marsh Edge Erosion Monitoring Program. Sixth grade students will continue monitoring erosion twice a year in the salt marsh that adjoins Plains Park as part of long-term study to collect data over time for use in topic areas including climate change and the effects of time, the effects over time of invasive species. Thank you. Jennifer Morgan and Anne Shea for Riverside Elementary School for technology to build connections between the computer lab and library that will be used in conjunction with their iPads and Chromebooks. Software to teach letters, numbers, and patterns for our younger learners and for our second to fifth graders, kits for coding and programming, circuits, and audiovisual production technology. Amazing stuff. Super grateful. Amber Adair for Riverside Elementary School to expand the repertoire of focused teacher-directed dramatic play centers to the integrated preschool classrooms. Scott Fields, Lee Russo, and Alex Carroll for Danvers High School, purchase of Vermeer conductivity probes to be able to perform certain experiments and analysis that involve measuring how much electricity is conducted by certain materials in chemistry and bio. Amazing. So good. Caitlin Resnick, Kristen Crowley, Erica Bodong, sorry, I said that wrong. Courtney Henrik, Sarah Demato, Maureen Carroll, and Anna Lagarda for Thorpe Elementary School to purchase a sensory hallway kit to enhance inclusive learning environment for all students, increase student focus, and provide students with opportunities for additional structured movement rates during the day. Stephanie Guker and Emily Smith for Riverside Elementary School to purchase additional manipulative-type toys such as Doflos, Play-Doh activities, pot beads, bedboards, and magnetic tiles for integrated special ed preschool. Kelly Rudokia and Estelle Rand for Thorpe Elementary School to purchase a level of technology-enhanced learning through the purchase of breakout EDU game kits to support critical thinking, keyboard coding and programming kits. Kristin Sarito and Lisa Dean for Grade Oak Elementary School to purchase technology-based learning materials necessary to implement an effective makerspace environment. Ellen White for Holton Richmond Middle School to purchase additional materials to support the efficiency and expansion of the in-stitches sewing club across all grades. So good. Love it. Tracy Ewing for Danvers High School to purchase a whiteboard stand-up desk to be the foundation of the manipulative center for special education students to work with language in new collaborative and interactive ways. Alex Conant and Mark Gargan, Danvers High School, to purchase additional robotics kits decreasing group sizes and increasing learning opportunities for the over 150 students who take robotics courses over the course of the school year. Cheryl James and Michelle Marrow for Highlands Elementary to purchase a chess starter club pit, interactive engineering vehicles, and media production technology, including green screen and stickboard animation, to enhance their makerspace learning opportunities for students. Michelle DiMano, Lori Izzo, Renata Yling, and Rebecca Waite for Holton Richmond Middle School to purchase 10 standing tables to support flexible learning environments and integrate Chromebook use with work. Alan Fierke for the Danvers Public Schools to provide support for the implementation of project-based learning units across the district. As part of the district's strategic plan to provide all students engaging in learning experiences that allow for student voice and choice, teachers will have the opportunity to participate in a project-based learning summer institute to learn more about project-based learning, its benefits for student learning, and its integration to curriculum, and then receive funds to support the materials needed for implementation in the following school year. And that's it. All right.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the teachers for submitting the grant applications. It does mean a lot for DEEP to be able to provide additional support for you, to bring it into the classroom, to help enhance your learning with the students, and I know that it definitely helps, so please continue to apply for the grants and encourage your fellow coworkers as well if there's any great ideas that they want, need support with, to check out a teacher grant. So, thank you, and thank you to DEEP.
Thank you. So we can take a moment for a transition to our grant recipients. We'll be able to have a picture taken for DEEP. We are grateful to DEEP's support, our teachers for applying for the grants, the alignment to the strategic plan. Thank you very much.
Cynthia, thank you. This is your good opportunity, too. Yes, no joy in the morning. And you have a card now?
Congratulations. Thank you.
I know, it makes it so much harder to get out of bed in the morning now because my mom's not like...
Go to work. Great, so thank you. Next on the agenda for information from the Superintendent, we have the highlight of our accomplishments, our FY '19 district-wide goals and final school council accomplishments. We'd like to combine this with our strategic plan update. So Mary and I are going to tag-team together on this presentation, and I will start with the, the school council accomplishments first. And we'd like to point out again, working with our communication and business assistant in central office, working on some logo pieces, so you can see the beginning of this for the Danvers Public Schools, it matches with the website. So trying to pull all of our pieces together as we continue to share our pride that we have in our Danvers Public Schools with our community. So for the school council accomplishments, we think about our strategic plan, having seven schools, all of our schools aligned with the strategic plan and on a continuum. So you'll see connections throughout this presentation. For our elementary schools, some of the highlights that we wanted to point out, and again, our school committee has seven school council reports that are multiple pages, plus the district accomplishments also, so you have a lot of information that we were able to highlight here in this presentation. For elementary major accomplishments from this past year is the implementation of our Amplify Science, a new science program, which also went along with looking at our schedule. So we wanted to make sure we had time for science and also looking at time throughout the entire day, which was really part one. You'll see in next year's goals, the work has already started for an updated schedule that really aligns our work with what is our core values, what is the core curriculum and instruction time that is needed. We also have the logic models for each of our five elementary schools. This year, the focus was on our math with our elementary students and at... This year, the focus was on our math with our elementary students, and at the Riverside Elementary School, more on the problem solving. Our schools did meet overall their goals in our logic models. Of course, there's always some exceptions along the way when we're looking at K to five in all of our grades. With that information, our principals working with Julie, our elementary curriculum director, will continue to work with teachers, but it was really an opportunity to really start again that alignment between our goals, working with the FAR cycle, and then having this really become our work as we practice that throughout this school year. And then, the third goal on most of our, the school improvement plans, was with the social-emotional learning. Each of the schools worked on supports, types of lessons. You heard earlier about our specialists in the art-music PE and the types of lessons that they were incorporating, and then the different types of celebrations that happened throughout the school year. Next, we have, and I was going to press it on mine because I can see it, but it's really, Mary's pressing the button for the community. At the middle school, looking at four goals at the middle school, the FAR cycle, again, you'll see those connections there, working on formative assessment and supports, working through the cycles. There's a cycle that you work through in that sort of the problem solving of looking at student data, having a formative assessment, and then making adjustments in the instruction with our students and the supports that our students needed, which will fall into that work that Mary will talk about at the district level with multiple tiers of student support. Student engagement was another major piece for the middle school, and that continued with the Project HAWK, and also looking at, let me say, with student engagement was the project-based learning that we did hear about, and we'll hear more about that in coming up with the professional development, the connection that we've already heard this evening, with the connection with a DEEP grant to support professional development, and that was a first for us also in asking for that. So, we're very appreciative of that support from DEEP. With social-emotional learning at the middle school, Project HAWK continue, and that gets stronger every year as the program that really involves all students, all teachers at the middle school, and looking at the social-emotional learning with our students. And then, also a focus on attendance. You'll see that also at the high school level, really looking at what chronic absenteeism is, and how do we really have that student engagement to support our students to be here in school for their learning. And that will then transition also into our elementary schools, really looking at the attendance for next school year. And with family engagement, looking at, you've already heard about the celebration of learning, but I did want to highlight, I hope it's okay with Ellen. Ellen does her weekly updates to the faculty at the middle school, and they've already done their survey with faculty, students, and with families to get feedback from the celebration of learning. I had the opportunity to be there on Wednesday morning, and as one of the teachers said, the buzz that was in the middle school, the way that it was reformatted for this year and having the amount of families there, you could just see how proud the students were and how proud the parents were that the students were sharing it, that it was really student-centered. So, one student said, "My dad was proud of me. It was student-driven. I liked that part. It made me feel proud of myself to be able to present. My son was so prepared from a family member, a parent. The best part was how confident and proud our son was to show us his work. Noticeable self-confidence. They felt good about themselves." A staff member said, "Overall, our students were able to confidently explain their work. Each student walked in with a sense of ownership and pride in that it really was 100% student-driven." Lots of support from their teachers, but once we handed it to the students with their preparation, they were able to provide that opportunity to share what they've been learning all year with their families. And then, over to the high school, for our high school level, again, looking at three major areas, the FAR cycle, again, formative assessment and supports, working with their team leaders, working with each team, so each common planning time, whether it's algebra or English nine, each of those teams are working on it and making progress with that cycle. Student engagement, you've heard connections throughout this evening's meeting already, Project Lead the Way, our interdisciplinary courses, and the innovative innovation pathways designation, major accomplishments for this school year. And with the SCL, the social-emotional learning, the pilot of our, the TLC, looking at the therapeutic learning center, there were about 20 students that participated in that program this year. We also were able to work with our North Shore Education Consortium that started a new program called PAS, Positive, yes, Positive Alternatives to School Suspension. Lots of those phrases for all the work in education, which has been very successful also to help students to address things that they need to work on versus only having the discipline there. And then, the Why You Matter campaign, that was very successful at Danvers High School and will continue, and again, that was also student-driven. So, I'm going to hand it to Mary, who will then bring us through the district.
All right. So, I think you heard me speak about a lot of this work along the way, but I'll give you a quick synopsis of what we did. This year, we unveiled the strategic plan to you starting last August, and we gave you a framework for that plan of our broad goals, but what happened was, we also had the Essex County Learning Community Grant, and that grant really helped us put together an action plan for this year and for the coming years on how that strategic plan would play out in the district. So, it was a wonderful timing of the grant coming while we were working on the strategic plan, so that worked out well. So, in our plan, we had three strategic objectives, or we have them, safe and supportive learning environments, coherent curriculum instruction and assessment, and student engagement. And how that lines up with the ECLC grant is that they had a focus on SEL, which equaled the safe and supportive learning environments. They had a focus on multi-tiered system of support to help students both academically and behaviorally, so that is really under the coherent curriculum instruction and assessment. And then, project-based learning, which is under our student engagement goal. So, doing that, each one of the areas, the safe and supportive learning environments, as you know, we have a district-wide social-emotional learning steering committee. They planned and implemented the community forum that we had in March that was very successful, and that work started us on our way of putting together a vision for the district for social-emotional learning, and so the steering committee kind of wrapped that up and kind of pulled together a vision. And they are, we are right now, working on planning professional learning for adults for SEL. We're thinking that we really need to work with the adults to have a solid understanding of the five competencies before we can begin to, you know, roll out a program for our social-emotional learning. So, we're really going to look at next year to developing district-wide goals or standards for social-emotional learning so that any kind of program that we put together for students is aligned to standards, and then we measure their attainment of those standards. So, I just listed the members of the committee to give them. I mean, they've done such great work this year, and I'm really enjoyed my time working with them and look forward to the coming year. The second strategic objective is coherent curriculum and instruction, coherent curriculum instruction and assessment. And the bulk of our work under this area was the, what you hear, this is a FAR cycle, but it really is what our goal was, is to work on coaching high-impact teacher teams, to really get those, what they call professional learning community teams, or usually teams of three or four teachers that work together to really have high impact on student achievement. So, we worked on them through what we've been calling the FAR cycle process, which is really monitoring how they're doing with meeting those lesson objectives that we put out every day or every week for kids to learn. So, we really are seeing our kids really learning what we're trying, we're teaching them. So, that process really helps us assess that, and then it helps us plan firm action or take action if they hadn't, or extend them if they have. So, that was what we did at this. So, this work was really done by the school-level data teams. We had at least a team of five from every school, a little bit larger at the middle and high school because of our teacher leader population, and they would in turn go back to their schools and facilitate the work during early releases with their peers. So, that's again, another example of great kind of teachers and administrators working together to kind of get that work done. Also, under the coherent curriculum instruction assessment is what Dr. Dana referred to earlier on a multi-tiered system of support. Again, that's working same idea with the FAR cycle is kind of making sure that all students are meeting the targets, the learning targets that we're setting for them. The FAR cycle helps us determine if they're meeting those targets. We try to take action, what we call tier one, in the regular classroom. The teacher's trying to take, make that support happen in the classroom, but if a student is still struggling and not able to get there, then we might need to look at another tier of support. So, we have to, you know, bring in a reading specialist maybe at the elementary level or some kind of interventionist. They would come in the classroom and still work with the students, but just bring in another level of support, another, some more, another adult to really help move those kids along. And then, finally, if that tiered instruction isn't working, then we had the top tier where you get more like a one-on-one, one-on-two kind of student-to-teacher ratio where we really give intense focused instruction. So, they always talk about the tiers, as tier one is the core curriculum, you know, in English or ELA in math and science that we're teaching, but then tier two is core plus more, and then they say tier three is core plus more and plus more, like really intense instruction, so that as the tiers go up, the intensity increases. So, we've been able to work with the Essex County Learning Community districts to learn more about that. We just finished a series of three professional development workshops, and the team members are down here. Dr. Dana was with us over at Endicott College, and we also had technical assistance by the presenter. She would come to Danvers and give us specifically what Danvers was doing and what did our multi-tiered system of support look like, and she really gave us great tips on implementing that, and really helped us develop an action plan for year one. And at first, we were really thinking more elementary to really get that literacy, multi-tiered system of support like solidified, but she really pushed us to do middle and high school steps as well, so we're really, we thought that was great work. And then, as we move on, we have project-based learning as our student engagement piece. Frank Locker, who I think many of you met, who helped us with this school visioning, and then us doing the visioning for the strategic plan, he hosts a project-based learning conference. We sent a team of 10 people to that, and so they really got the work going and flowing. I think we saw evidence of it at the elementary level. We've seen some presentations over the last few school committee meetings of project-based learning. Ellen at the Holton Richmond convened a study group, so they met nine or 10 times this past year to really deeply study and research what project-based learning was all about. And that really led Ellen and I to work, to work together and get a PBL Institute going in July, and we're working with what was called the Buck Institute before, and now they've transformed and their new name is PBL Works, but they're like the gold standard for project-based learning, and they're coming to Danvers. So, we're excited to work with them and really get at the heart of what project-based learning is, and not just like do fun activities with kids, but really dig into making sure there's standards that are being assessed and that they're using their 21st century learning skills to get at it. So, and they really, the students are the drivers of the learning and not the teachers. So, the teachers are the drivers by putting together these great project-based learning experiences, but the kids really own it.
Thank you, Mary. And we want to thank Mary, our administrators, and our teachers. You see a number of people who have been involved, the community members who came out to also be part of the SEL visioning. So, there are many people that have been involved in this planning and the beginning of implementation for our first year of this strategic plan, and we also have administrators here to answer any questions this evening. Thank you.
Questions? Eric?
Yeah, there's an awful lot, an awful lot here, and are these the plans, the strategic plan, the individual school council plans all available on our websites?
They are, and the latest ones that are there are the major accomplishments. So, after tonight's meeting, we will then start to put up what you see in your packet. Those will be all on each of the individual school websites.
Because I think that's really, is, it's almost too much to try and summarize, just that there's an awful lot of good stuff going on at the schools, an awful lot of hard work, and thank you to the community members who participate along with people on staff. But if people want to know what's going on in the Danvers Public Schools and what's being done, the strategic plans and the school improvement plans are a great place to start because people are putting an awful lot of work in to try and make improvements here. I only had one real specific question and that has to do, and maybe Dr. Columbino could help out with the therapeutic learning center. And I'm just curious as to, now you've had it for a year, how do you think it went? What did we learn? What, are you contemplating any changes? Are you happy with the results that you saw? That sort of, just kind of a functional assessment in a shorthand way.
That's a great question. I think we're thrilled with how it went through our pilot year, how we're able to meet the needs of a lot of students who needed it. I think that's, one of the big takeaways is that there is a need, even more of a need than what we may have initially thought. A lot of the components of it worked, having it be flexible enough so they didn't have to actually change their schedule, so they can, you know, they keep their schedule and they access the TLC program as needed, and they can help a lot with reintegrating back into classrooms. And then, I think around with any kind of program development after the first year, like things around communication, so making, to tighten up, you know, how do students get into the program, which we have a plan, but just to make it even better, to make sure all the teachers know exactly the progress for the students and that there's a constant flow of communication between the teachers and the TLC program. And also, I think it was a really comfortable place, but on the inverse, that can also be not a great thing when our goal is to reintegrate students back into.
Sure, yeah.
So, we're trying to think about ways to kind of maybe like set up like a default where like after two weeks, like a typical trajectory kind of thing, like you'll go back to like, you know, whatever the number is, half a year classes or three-year classes. Not that we're going to make every student do that, but just to sort of have typical kind of goals so that if students not, aren't making that kind of progress, then we can reconvene the team to figure out why they're not responding and what we can do to make their needs even better.
Oh, that makes perfect sense. So, I think it's, it really is something that clearly there was a need for, and I'm really glad we implemented that this year and look forward to it refining it and getting better as you go along. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, manager.
Jeff?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. There's so much documentation, and I mean, I'll thank the administrators and everyone for summarizing. I'm usually in a one-page in the front. I mean, that's the best really way to see at a high level and very quickly, not just what we accomplished, but I would say what our priorities were. And I appreciate, at least it looked to me, that everyone took the time to put them in a prioritization order, right? So, yes, there were five, six, 10 things on a page, but a lot of times, these were prioritized, so I think those were good as well. On the middle school question, we had talked last time about, you know, some of the scores and the tests and things like that, and we talked, one of the previous meetings about, obviously, a lot of the formative assessment that we do. And not to, I'm not as much worried about the actual test itself, but one of the things we talked about was, how do the students feel about the test? We were going to talk to them about, you know, are you relaxed, comfortable, how you think it went? Did we, did we do that? Do we have a preliminary sense as to this year? Because I know we were going to kind of work on it and say, you know, are they comfortable environment, have time, worked with the Chromebooks, kind of, you know, make them more comfortable? Are they in a better position this year, do we think, for that?
So, I would say that this year, we focused on, from the adult end, creating a more supportive environment, but one that also stressed sort of personal accountability to the test. I would see the next extension to now with the kids, with the current sixth and seventh graders, and, you know, to see what they felt worked well this year and then build upon that for next year. I think anecdotally, we heard a lot of positive things from the kids about just the atmosphere and what the test days felt like, but I think we could probably more formally assess that going into next year. This year was sort of adding some new practices from the adult side.
Yeah, I mean, I heard good stories about teachers actually, you know, writing students' notes, you know, that's great. I mean, that's a terrific thing. And that's great.
A lot of time and effort, notes on lockers, personal notes, signage, just trying to...
T-shirts, yeah, the t-shirts.
We had, yeah, we all had t-shirts. I wore one over my tie, and you know, we tried to balance that, and so I think we would next year look to really bring the students in on that and see what they felt was helpful and other ideas that they may have too. I think kind of sneak preview of our plan, there's going to be a real component of student engagement and student leadership around a lot of the goals for next year. That's going to be sort of a theme we hope to put in with every, every goal.
Yeah, that's good.
So, that was sort of a good starting point this year.
Yeah, yeah, I think that there was a lot that was good in there, because a lot of the focus was on the most important part to me, which is the formative assessments, right, which is, are you learning in the middle of the year, regular, non, I don't know, you know, invasive, you know, ways to test?
Yes.
Whether you understand the information, right? We don't have to have a constant formal test the entire time. There's other ways to do that. So, no, it was good, and a lot of that was done not just through the middle school, but through all the schools, so.
I would add, we did this year's survey, all of our students regarding Project HAWK, and we did a Google forum that all kids were able to give feedback about that program as well. So, we'll be looking at that data to kind of build next year's program. And then, we do now, the eighth grade takes a survey with MCAS, so we've had, now we'll have a couple of years of that data that I think will be worthwhile to start to look at some of the trends that that produces. So, I think we have a lot of good student-based data sources that will help us, you know, kind of put the map... kind of put the map together for next year.
Yeah. And I mean, that's why every website now says, you know, would you recommend this? Or, you know, these little annoying pop-ups sometimes come up. It's really a feedback mechanism. They try to be, you know, not too noticeable, but of course they are. But good, so this is very good. Thank you.
Dave?
Just a couple of quick questions for Mary related to the Essex County grant. Sounds like that was a really successful grant. Any chance there's an extension there?
It has been extended through December of 2019. And so that's as far as I know. So we're going to be starting working with universal design for learning. So coming off the multi-tiered system of support, they're really going to look at the instruction that we give to students and really making it universally accessible for all students. So keeping, the whole theme of this grant is really inclusive practices for students with diverse learning needs. So we're really looking forward to working with the experts on doing that. And we've dabbled in that, we've done that. I don't, I think when the first Common Core frameworks came up, we really worked on universal design for learning, but they've really done some really great changes and made it a lot easier to implement. So I think it's going to be great to get refreshed on that work and bring it back to Danvers.
Great. And then just related to that, when you're going to these sessions, like you mentioned, there was one at Endicott College. Are other districts involved in those as well?
Yep.
And is there an opportunity to get best practices from the different districts?
Yes, yes. So we're working with Gloucester, Rockport, Beverly, Swampscott, and Haverhill. And so we're all, all our teams of 10 are sitting at large tables, working on our individual systems of support. But then we get to share, there's lots of sharing time together to kind of do that. So it's been a great experience to really work closely, like with Beverly and Gloucester and Swampscott, to really share some great practices. So it's been good. We get to go to site visits, so we've been over, we've been to Haverhill. We actually saw Haverhill's, what, their version of the TLC program? And that's, they're further along in their program. So Dr. Tatum and I went and really learned some great things that we're looking forward to working with Danvers High on their program as well. So then, Dr. Dana went...
Ellen and I went to Beverly.
Yeah, and they saw the new middle school and talked to, and I think they're really working on inclusive practices at that middle school and how that works.
That's good. I'm glad everyone's learning from each other because why recreate the wheel if you don't have to?
Right, and so it was great, the first day, the first times we all met as districts and to find that we're struggling with the exact same things. And we might be taking different tasks with it, which is excellent because we can find out what works and what's not working. So it's really a great time to be working together.
Great, thank you.
Arthur?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I would say, just kind of expanding upon what Eric said, the information that we talked about tonight, and we've talked about this stuff off and on during the course of the year, is really all geared to what we're doing to get better, to improve ourselves. Not that we aren't doing well, but to continue to improve and move forward and just, you know, do the best we can. And so I just want to stress that over the past couple of months, during budget hearings and town meeting, there's been a very small group that wonders whether or not we really are trying to, we're complacent or whether we're trying to improve. And, you know, obviously, they don't pay any attention to any of our meetings or what we do because they would know that that's not true if they did. But, you know, I'd suggest that any of those people maybe go on, go online and read all of this information before they want to make comments like that. It might, might help them understand better and maybe speak from a more knowledgeable base. So I would say it's good information, it's important information, and it's available. So if the public wants to see it, if they have questions about what we're doing and whether or not we continue to try to improve, get on there and read it and then let me know what you think.
I just want to thank everyone that worked on these school improvement plans. It is a lot of work. It's very detailed. I appreciate that and thank you for it. And to what Eric and Arthur and all of us feel, there's work going on every day in all the schools to make it so that students are learning, so that we're getting better. And I do appreciate that as a parent and as a school committee member. So thank you for that. And it is very detailed, reading through it, and it's good to read through it to know what is happening. So thank you for that and looking forward to next year's goals.
Thank you, thank you. And a connection with that also is thinking about graduation again from Saturday. And I think I said it last year, when our class officers spoke about the mission statement and each of them took a different part of it. This year, our officers went through their elementary journey to middle school to high school and then what it would be like to be a Danvers High graduate. And I think their message again was, it was really about the people. They're grateful for this community, for the value of education in the community, for their mentors, the amount of people that are here to support them. And they know that's what's really important about their learning, they're taking that on to their next journey in life. So thank you very much.
I actually thought the same thing when I was sitting there listening to the speeches and hearing the students speak highly of all the teachers and all the, their families and their friends that they've made and what they've learned and how they're taking that and they're going on to further their careers, be it at school or in a career or trade. I was thinking the same thing, that they spoke so highly of it, that they received such a great education here. So kudos to everyone that has done that for them.
Thank you very much. Next is the facility update, and Mr. Javerner is not here this evening. He's in New York for a safety conference tomorrow. So I will fill in for the facility update for this evening. There are two pieces. One, that we sort of put under facilities, but we want to make sure we shared with you also through the Smith School Project in the flex zones. And although we don't have his, one of our top themes for this year, it's because we have that foundation, we're going to continue with it, with the community engagement. So at the end of May, since our last meeting, we also held a breakfast with local realtors. So I think we had 10 local realtors join us that morning. It was a very nice back and forth for learning from them and also being able to share with the realtors what our priorities are, that you just heard and we just shared with the community again, and share with them the website where they can find all the information, and then share also with the flex zones and how we're seeing, we get more questions this spring also of that I am purchasing or I'm moving from one part of Danvers to another part of Danvers, what will that look like? And we do want our children to stay in their elementary schools, each of the five elementary schools, although we have the same curriculum, have their own cultures and families value that. So as they can stay in their schools and the flex zones are helping them to do that. So that was one of the pieces since our last meeting. And then something upcoming is for the Smith School Project on June 20th.
20th?
20th, thank you.
Just looking it up.
Thank you. On team effort here, on June 20th, we will hold a community forum at the Smith Elementary School at 7:00 PM. This is really all the work that has been put into the plans, the architectural plans, working, everyone coming together. The groundbreaking will be in the fall, but the pre-site work is starting as soon as school finishes on June 18th. So it's very exciting. And we'll hold a neighborhood community meeting on the 20th. Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business.
Thank you. Our bullying prevention plan, the superintendent recommends the approval of the review of the bullying prevention plan for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion on it? Eric? No? Jeff? Dave?
No.
Arthur?
Good.
Okay, so we're voting on this one as well. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you.
And that will also, now that it's been voted, will be put up on the website also and shared through our information in September with our families.
School committee. Now the school committee, subcommittees.
The committee is on the agenda now.
So for the upcoming school year, our school committee, subcommittees, budget would be the entire school committee, superintendent's evaluation, the entire school committee, policy will be Arthur and Dave, contract negotiations will be Eric and Arthur, Danvers Cares will be Jeff. I will continue on with deep. CPAC, Arthur and myself as a backup. Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, Dave. Wellness Advisory will be Dave. Legislation is Eric. And the signers on the bill sheets will be Arthur and Eric.
Did you want me to do the diversity?
That, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
One less committee, bummer.
No, I was reading, sorry. I, I'm sorry, we did Eric, the, for the Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee.
All right, we can change it right there.
It's the first time we've ever had a fight over a committee.
There was no fight.
Actually, you both could do it if you really want to. But I did...
I'll leave it in Eric's very capable hands.
Very good, thank you.
It's already changed, look at that.
Happy to back you up if you can't make a meeting.
Excellent, thank you. So any further discussion on that? Does that require a vote?
Nope.
No? Very good. New business.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends the approval of the proposed 2019, 2020 pre-K to 12 student-parent handbooks for a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Arthur?
Are you, do you have any information on it?
Sure, if I could just, I'll do just a quick overview of it. No slides for this one. We have, our principals are here and with our directors to answer any questions that you may have or be able to give you a more in-depth overview of what you have. So each level gave a one-page overview of the pieces. At the elementary school, clarifying field trips, chaperones, and then also clarifying the homework policy. At the middle school, working with our social-emotional learning, relooking at our cell phone policy. And at Danvers High School, a conversation from earlier this year that we worked with the policy subcommittee on the graduation requirements you'll see in there. And then the high school, working with their school council, looking at attendance, adding information about the pass program, that positive alternative to school suspension, and then also looking at the dress code and really kind of being more global with that policy also and with some research that the school council put together.
And I'm sure I had a couple of questions on the high school one.
Yes, please.
All right, there you go.
So on the, let's see, the attendance policy, if I read it correctly, students are going to need documentation every time they're out, right?
No, it's more to get students in school, to try to figure out ways to do that. So putting it at that four days per quarter, that if you hit...
Okay.
To put supports in place along the way. But the idea being that even with all those supports, if they hit that 16, which is arbitrary and we're going to have to figure out if it works, if it's right, if it's not effective, then they're, they wouldn't get, they need to do something corrective to give the course credit.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be like in the past, like we've tried things like, you know, they get five or 10 points taken off their grade, or it might be an individual teacher that has a policy. This is more global where it's...
Okay.
If you're not in school, like you, you're not going to get credit because it, at some point, it does impact your grades, you have, you know, professional responsibility, all those things.
Well, I guess what I was, I saw something on the... Oh, here we go. Okay, so in terms of the requirement for documentation, on page eight, if documentation is not brought into the school within two days of returning, students' absences will be considered undocumented.
Right.
Other examples of undocumented absences include caring for siblings, oversleeping, missed bus, car problem, parent notes, and family trips or vacation. What does the parent note mean in there?
That would just be students come in with notes saying like, please excuse my son or daughter for being late or being absent.
Yep.
I think wording on that can get worked on between now and August too. So the idea is that not to get so caught up in the excused, unexcused, but just that there, how many days students are at school, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I mean, when I first read it, I thought, gee, we're sort of saying every time you're out, you have to get a doctor's note.
No, no.
It seemed a little...
And we've also, we've gotten faculty feedback on both policies, the dress code and the attendance policy. So we're going to work. And that hasn't been integrated, but that will be integrated into the policies for the August reading.
Yeah, there's no question. I mean, I know that it's a concern and it's something you're working on and support. I just want to make sure I understood it.
Yep.
And let's see, under graduation, if I missed it, tell me, but is the civics project a graduation requirement?
It's not a graduation requirement. The law says that there has to be a unit at a high school level, so it's fairly broad.
Okay.
We're fortunate enough to, that our 11th grade English team, they've been doing a lot of work with Project Citizen before the law got into place. So we've worked with them this year, unbroadening to make it so that every 11th grader has access to it.
Okay.
So and to work with, it's all, it's in all 11th grade ELA classes this year. And then next year, we'll also move it into making sure that our American Studies interdisciplinary course has a civics unit as well as our advanced placement courses, because we do have a number of 11th graders taking 11th grade English as well.
Okay. Let's see. Discipline, the pass program, is it the pass program that we're...
Yep.
And that's focused, if I read that correctly, that's sort of an alternative to suspensions for, aimed at students primarily having substance abuse issues and/or mental health issues.
Yep.
And I assume that's an adjunct to whatever supports we already have in place.
Correct. So that if, for example, if a student gets caught vaping, for example, that at the suspension hearing, based on the information that the team gets, one that we might decide to offer to go to the pass program. So, you know, rather than, it's not something that we can make a student or family participate in, but we can offer it that instead of a, you know, a three or four-day suspension, go to the pass program for a few days. And then that way, students aren't home, but they're at a program at the Beverly Y, it's staffed, they get, they get connected for referrals. So I think about a third of the students actually didn't have services before and as a result of the program were referred for services, which is great.
Oh, good.
And it also gives them supported time to make up some academic work, individual and group therapy. So it's, that program's been really successful this year. And that's a, with a number of other districts in the area that are participating.
Suspensions are a tricky thing because I think sometimes the last thing a student needs if they're having issues is to then be isolated for any period of time from the school system, from the structure of a day, all of those things.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that seems to make a lot of sense. And let's see, I guess that's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Before you sit...
Anything else for high school?
Same thing.
Can I just follow up on the absences thing?
Sure.
So, and maybe Eric asked it, maybe I just missed it, but so if a student has like a, like really bad flu and he's out for the whole week, a mono or something like that, I mean, that's not going to require a meeting, correct?
No, so that, and that's part of the reason why we set it up that way. So I think adding examples in there would help a lot too.
Yeah.
But like, it's like four days per quarter, understanding that it's not always going to be linear either, right? Because like first quarter, you might get the flu. That would just, if we run an attendance report, we can make sure to work as a team to say, oh, that student had the flu, that's really the end of the discussion. But it keeps that student on the radar too, so that if, you know, quarter two, they're at like eight or 10 absences, then we can try to see if there's a trend going on or something else in addition to, you know, just being said that one time.
Yeah, no, and that's, I think, yeah, I think a little, little more clarity there is...
Yeah, and to give some leeway too. Because there's always going to be some extenuating circumstances as well that we don't want to, we don't want to be overly punitive to students either.
The goal is good. I mean, we want them to be here, but obviously, you know, we don't want, we don't want people The goal is good. I mean, we want them to be here, but obviously, you know, we don't want, we don't want people thinking that, you know, on the fourth day when the kid's fever is 102, you can't, I'm not going in to meet with those teachers. So, you're going to school.
No, that's not the intent, sure.
Good, and that's all. I just wanted to just, just follow up on that.
And I had a comment on the same topic while we're at it. In addition to what Arthur was saying, there are school approved events. For example, I'm thinking if the kids are going to the International DECA Conference, that's four days right there. So, if then they have a cold, you know, so we, and it says.
And so, sorry.
No, good. I was just saying, so I think it's a phrasing situation, that's all.
Absolutely. And a lot of the school-sponsored events are coded differently, so they'll be coded as field trips, so they count as being in school and present.
Okay, because it says here excused and/or unexcused per quarter. So, I just think, yeah, I think it's just.
Some clarity.
Yeah, adding all of those pieces.
Right.
The intent is right, I'm just, some phrasing.
He's not getting back up, so if you have any questions.
Well, it was going to be the difference between high school and middle school, so you can just stand if you just want to answer both. We'll give it a shot. So, the difference between policies for cell phones between middle school and high school. So, it looks like high school is, students can have phones, they're just not permitted to use them during instructional time. Except consent of the teacher, right, for an app or doing something else like that.
Yep.
They are able to use them during lunch or passing between classes. Middle school now, students are not allowed to have them. It's the proposal, okay. So, we are voting on that. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, fine by me. But, yeah, I mean.
See, this is what happens when people have cell phones.
Yeah.
So.
But, so, yeah, if you want to give some more context, this is the background and why and what's going on.
So, we, a few years ago, we adjusted our policy to mirror, I think, the high school policy, which is basically they should not be seen nor heard during the instructional day. They were not allowed to use them at all, but they could be on their person. I think what we've found in the last couple of years is just a real spike in students trying to access their phone during class time. And this year in particular, that's been an issue that we've dealt with with a lot of students, six through eight, pretty pervasive. And I'm looking and in talking with our faculty, we felt like we were spending more time than we wanted policing the use of phones during instructional time, which takes away from teaching and learning time.
Yeah.
I did some research with my regional principal group and we found that six middle schools around us required students to store them in their lockers during the school day. And we felt like that, and that's something we used to do. When I started here, that was the policy. We also feel like that this goes to, it's actually a really healthy thing for our kids to maybe not have that phone buzzing in their pocket, trying to use it on the sneak, to take away that, just sort of that feeling. We really feel like they're not, while phones are sort of, everyone has them and everyone uses them now, I think many of us would recognize that kids at the middle school level aren't totally ready for all they, they bring and all the capabilities that they bring. And we feel like that a healthy break from them during the school day will return attention to learning and also help kids realize that they don't need to access their phone all the time. And we think that's going to be really healthy for our kids. Anecdotally, in talking with some of the other administrators from other districts, they report their kids were a little happier when, when, when this change was made, although initially they were a little unhappy with the change. But then over time, kids actually, it really improved their outlook on things. So, we, we'd like to try this for this year. We've had discussions at a couple of different parent events. Parents were actually surprisingly okay with this. We certainly want parents to be able to communicate with their kids, so they still have the ability, the kids can access their phones at the start of the day, the end of the day. Kids can actually get email on their Chromebooks. So, if there was something that a parent needed to get to their students, and we feel like we could help work with parents around that communication side. But we really feel like this is going to just set a different context to teaching and learning. And, and we think that we need to, we need to sort of bring that, that focus back to that aspect. So, you know, our hope is that we can, we can try this this year. We're happy to work with, with any groups that, including students around how it goes, but we feel like this is an important step for us right now. Again, it's in line with, you know, Manchester Essex, Ipswich, Triton, Beverly, Haverhill and Hamilton-Wentworth. So, we feel like we're not, we're not sort of blazing a path here. And there's other schools as well where that's the policy.
Yeah, I personally, I mean, my colleagues can weigh in. It's supported 100%. I mean, and it just makes everything even easier for the teachers, I would imagine too. I'm hoping teachers support this. But it's, like, it's one less thing you have to deal with, right? And, you know, you really can focus on this.
And I think our hope is to approach it as, you know, starting with a warning, starting with an opportunity to correct the issue. So, if you do have your phone, you'd be able to put it in your locker and then come back to class and just get into the learning. Like, we're not looking to, we would certainly, most of the sort of disciplinary side is actually the same language around chronic problems. But we, we're hoping that really it's just a correction and a routine that kids will just get into pretty quickly. And we'll, you know, we'll have to do a little bit of, especially with our older grades, you know, the returning kids, we're going to have to do a little bit of kind of publicizing this. And I think early on, there'll be a little implementation curve like there is with any change. But I, we feel like it's going to be, long-term, it's going to really help us out.
Yeah, the science is getting very clear on this now in terms of the benefits of being able to have, you know, real interactions, you know, away from the phone. You know, phone is not here, you know, in front of you. You're actually having a conversation like that, so.
Yeah, we think there's going to be some really nice side benefits to that and mental health benefits, that it will, kids will see school as a place that's a break from some of those pressures and that barrage of information that the phones provide. And hopefully, they'll see they don't need to, you know, long-term, they don't, they'll realize they don't need to check it all the time.
Okay.
And if a parent needs to get in touch with them, they can always just call the school?
They can. There's still the office phone, although it is, it is fun to watch kids try to use a regular phone. But we do have that access.
Yep.
The Chromebooks, there's a lot of, you know, there's different ways that we can, I think, help with parents if there's a message. But we, we're, my office staff will be supportive of parents who need to get, you know, important information to their kids. We'll, we'll adjust our practice to support that.
Do we still have rotary phones at the middle school?
We don't have rotary, but, you know, there's no contact, which is kind of fun to watch kids figure out, how do I get a hold of my mom?
That's good. Thank you.
Dave?
Ah, no, I asked my questions. I'm good.
Arthur?
No, I, on this particular point, I agree. I think it's a good idea.
I agree with it as well. And thank you for, I agree that if they have time away from their electronic devices, there's more engagement and learning how to interact with others. Having just done project graduation, some of the students have found it a little difficult to interact with each other over a long period of time. Even though they had their phones, they almost didn't know how to entertain, you know, do things together. So, I look forward to, hopefully this will help with students' learning definitely and achieve, you know, achieving better grades and all. And we'll see what will go with that. Thank you. And the only, I had a question on the attendance policy as well, but Jason, you explained how that would work, so you covered my questions. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything for elementary? There are more clarifications.
Ah, elementary handbook, any questions?
Didn't really see anything that jumped out, no.
Thank you.
We need, we need to vote.
So, we had a motion, we have a second. So, all those in favor of a first, this is a first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, all set.
Great, thank you. And our administrators can make a transition also for the remainder of our business pieces. It's still a busy week to get to June 18th. And Mr. Federico is heading to Washington DC very early in the morning. So, we thank him for.
Do you still have room?
Oh, I'll be up at 4:30.
I'm a veteran.
Thank you. So, next on our agenda, we have our fundraising request. The superintendent recommends the approval of the fundraising events for the DHS volleyball.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay.
Great.
Or our business communications?
Communications, we always keep our North Shore Education Consortium. It was nice that through the high school pieces, to be able to learn more about the PASS program, which was an option for all districts. And I think there were four or five districts that participated this year. So, we will continue with that. Next year, the consortium did hire a new treasurer, so we'll be introducing him next school year to you.
Thank you. Legislation, Eric?
I have no report this month, but I'll make sure I do a double long one the next time. Because, you know, Arthur likes those.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Subcommittees, Deep. Deep will be holding its Breakfast of Champions this Wednesday, 8:30 here at the high school atrium. We're honoring our retiring teachers, our businesses that have sponsored us this year. And we will have guest speaker, a couple of Deep grant recipients from last year speak about their grants. Last month, like Dave said, I want, we want to thank Michod Mitabishi that sponsored the Key for Success event here at Danvers High School. The student that won was Mohammed, I don't have his last name, but he won the car, was very excited about it. There were about 50 students that participated in the kickoff and Billy Costa from Kiss 108 was here to emcee that event. And again, Kevin and Jill Michod have been very generous to the Danvers Public Schools, so we want to thank them for that as well. And that's it for Deep. Danvers Cares.
Danvers Cares had its annual wrap-up meeting this week, last week? This week.
Last week, yes.
Time flies. It's just crazy how fast it flies. It was a terrific celebration at the senior center with everybody. We were, we are now welcoming Pam, so Pam Cochran, Reverend Pam Cochran is the new chair for this year. Judith Ryan is co-chair, which is excellent. And it was just a real, real nice review of the year and kind of, I won't go into the strategic goals, which I think everybody has, has read and we've seen, but just a real nice wrap-up of that and the accomplishments that have happened this year for Danvers Cares.
Thank you. CPAC?
CPAC is continuing. So, again, we had a different format this year and we'll continue working with Alicia. And she now has another person willing to also work with her. So, we'll be introducing them more in the fall and in planning. But there's been a, I think, a good communication with Dr. Tatum and planning out and having that beginning again at the preschool level. So, starting with our youngest learners and parents and rebuilding our CPAC over time. So, we thank Alicia and all of her work this year.
They also have a Facebook page as well.
Yes, thank you.
That provides a lot of different information, good information, not just what events they're holding, but events in other communities as well as information to help support families and their children. So, check it out, like it. It's a great page. Policy.
We are all set for this year, I think, right? Yes. Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee.
So, thank you to everyone who came to the gay pride flag raising in front of Town Hall on May 30th. That was a great ceremony. And up next is the July 4th reading of the Declaration of Independence. So, that will be fun and exciting. So, if anybody wants to volunteer to do that, sign up.
It's actually quite fun. I've done that the last.
Yeah, I did too.
It's nice. It's a great community.
Learn a lot of new words.
Yes, exactly.
Consanguinity, I think was one I had to look up.
And that's July 4th at the Library Pavilion?
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve and release the minutes from the May 13th, 2019 regular meeting and to approve but not release the minutes for the May 13th, 2013 executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, budget and donations.
Thank you. So, on behalf of Mr. Taverner, you have the May budget report going into June. So, you can see that there is a small surplus there that will be part of the end of the year reporting. Diane is working with our office staff and with Keith with doing all of our end of the year pieces and opening up purchase orders for next school year.
Excellent. Personnel.
And personnel, you have our personnel memo for the month of June also. And it looks a little quiet at the moment, but we have been ramping things up with interviews in central office. So, our schools begin with their principals and different types of screening committees and bring their candidates to central office. So, that has been in the works and you will see that at your August meeting.
That's the smallest personnel resignation. Have we had fewer resignations and retirements this year overall? It doesn't seem like there's been a lot on there.
Resignations at the moment, and we hope to keep that way as we finish out the month of June with no surprises. And the retirements, we did have 10, but we knew of them early in the process. So, that has given us the time to really start to work on it. And we do wait till after town meeting and once the budget is passed through the town to then start the hiring. So, that's with that being the third Monday in May, we're getting into that. So, you'll see that at the August meeting.
Thanks. Sorry, sorry to drag out the meeting.
That's okay. Any other?
Just so the August meeting, we'll have the list of retirements, is that it?
No, the list of new, the new.
No, I know, but did we ever get the list of retirements?
I believe so, but you know what? Because the, because we did know about them earlier, but then we don't really celebrate until later on, we will do a double check on that. If it wasn't in one of the past ones, we will, so that way you can see all 10 of them together.
That'd be great.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else this evening?
Nope.
Okay, our next meeting?
August 19th.
August 19th.
And we thank you for that that is the third Monday. So, we do change that for the month of August where everyone sort of enjoys a little bit of the summer. You'll hear about professional development and then that first school committee meeting in August begins the back to school with our school committee meeting. You'll see administrators here and then go into orientation, new teacher orientation and professional development and be ready for the students the Wednesday after Labor Day. Thank you.
All right, so no other business?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Danvers.